Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the--
Oops, sorry about that, Kevin. Go ahead.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Goldendale City Council for March 15, 2021. There'll be a couple of things that we do, but first we'll start with the call. The call to order.
Julie?
I'm here, Connie.
Kevin?
Yep, you know I'm here.
Andy?
I'm here.
Phil? Myland?
I'm here.
And Lauren's gone tonight.
Right. We don't have any call or anything from Phil. So I, Council, I need a motion to excuse Lauren Baker from attending tonight. He had another commitment.
This is Julie, I'll make that motion.
For Lauren Baker and Phil Montevillas, neither one are here tonight.
We got it. First and second.
Okay, Julie did it, and who's the second?
Kevin.
Very good, thanks. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, aye.
Thank you, thank you. Now, before we go to the agenda, we need to make a couple of changes. The agenda needs to be revised under Council Business to add a notice of award for a new avgas aircraft fueling system will be under Council Business. And the second part of that is we'll take that before we take the discussion on the public meeting operational plan. So those two, do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
This is Mayor, this is Myland, I so moved.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the agenda for this meeting and the consent agenda. All in favor?
Aye, aye, aye.
Thank you. We'll go on now to your department reports. I'm going to begin with our Goldendale Police Department Chief, Jay Hunt-Siker.
Okay, good evening, everybody. I've got just a couple of things. On that criminal case that Sergeant Lucatero spent so long investigating, the defendant in that on multiple counts of child pornography pled guilty as before, and today he was sentenced to 102 months for the Washington State charges. Now he goes into the system, and Tennessee will do their thing to get him back there to charge him for the crimes that extended back to Tennessee. On a good note, our K-9 officer, Stan Burchire, got with a company called Hero K-9, and they had a grant-type fundraiser program for equipment, which they do for all kinds of police departments. He put in for a new cage that's more properly fitted for the K-9 that goes into the car, and the fundraiser raised all the funds. It cost nothing to the city--
Wow.
--and was delivered today. So the company that makes the cage is the American Aluminum Associates, which are the standard equipment that we use. And so my plan is, is when the cage is installed, we will then do a press release with photographs so we can get that into the paper showing the installation is complete. And that's one of the things that the fundraiser asked that we do--
Sure.
--is we get hold of the paper and get it in there that, you know, this is now installed. So we're very happy with it. He's taken a look at it tonight, and all the pieces are there, so we're excited about that.
That's excellent.
So that's all I have for--
Thank you, thank you, Chief. Noah Hallmer, Fire Chief, is not on the line. He's doing fire department training at the Fire Department, so we excuse Noah. Is Doug Franton--
Doug's on here.
We do have Doug. We'll have a report now from our Public Works Supervisor, Doug Franton.
Do you know, Harry?
Yep.
Okay, so just a few things. We got a couple new water services that we put in. We're starting to work in the parks a little bit. Currently, we're chasing a water leak on the east side of town, and we're cleaning up Red Rock from the snow as piles. And that's about it.
Thank you, Doug, very much. Appreciate all the work your department's doing. Connie, did you hear anything? Okay.
How's morale doing down at Public Works and with the rest of the city employees?
Morale's going great, as far as I know. Doug?
What was that, Connie, Mr.--
He wanted to know how the morale was over at the Public Works Department.
Um, it's good, slow coming back around. We're kinda, you know, we're kinda getting them-- Oh, yeah, it's slowly picking up.
Good, good. It's a hard thing to work with, really is. We'll go on now to Council Business, and we'll begin with the item that was added to the agenda, the notice of award for a new avgas aircraft fueling system. Larry?
Yeah, I'll just read the summary here. Precision Approach Engineering is recommending that the City of Goldendale award a contract for a new avgas aircraft fueling system up at the Goldendale US Airport to the apparent low bidder. That would be Mascot Equipment Company. And this project award will keep things moving. The reason why it's important that we get it done now is it has a pretty long lead time to be actually constructed at their site, and then it'll be delivered. Corey could probably provide a little more information about the critical time path that we've got to follow in that one. And so he is here, if you have any questions. Corey, maybe you could make some introductory comments about how it got to here and where we still need to go.
That sounds great. Good evening, Larry. Thank you for the introduction. City Council members, good to be here again. Been a while. Where we left off last was with our plan to move forward with the fuel system. So executing that, we actually divided the project into two parts. The fuel system bid, which is the bid that we're here tonight with, with Precision Approach's recommendation to award. And then the second part of that that we're just about to bid is the associated site development improvements. And so that'll be the power to the fuel system, the concrete slab, and a small apron to park the aircraft on. And so as Larry mentioned, the reason this was bid in two parts, one was to save the city some money. The fuel system, as you can see, is a fairly high cost, and so it's better to bid these standalone and not put them under a separate bid for site development, where you might get an earthwork or a contractor that will mark up that fuel system. And then the other part is so we can get that awarded and get the submittals approved so that we can get the project for the tank, apparently the tank, moving. That's about a 16-week lead time right now, and of course, COVID hasn't helped things out any with that. Larry, anything else you want me to hit on specifically?
I think it's important that the Council be aware that we did get, we submitted information relative to the need to reauthorize, because this funding cycle ends June 30 of 2011-- or 2021, excuse me. And so this 16 weeks, of course, is going to run us over that number, so we're having to push some of the expenses into the next biennium. But our gal that we work with at the Department of Commerce has indicated we just need to make them aware of those numbers, which we have done, and she said there's nothing else we need to do. It will be reauthorized in the next biennium. Is that the way you understand it, Corey?
Yeah, that's affirmed, and the way it's been presented to us is it's just a procedural to reauthorize.
Right. So if there, if there any Council members have any questions beyond that, we're here. Otherwise, if you don't have any questions, then we would recommend moving forward on a notice of award to get the equipment purchased and constructed in the next 16 weeks.
I'm excited about this. I do have a couple of questions, but I am for the project. Are we able to, how much flexibility do we have if, let's say, a grant pops up and we can expand the fuel system or expand different areas of the project?
So, good question. This has definitely been set up with a modular approach, knowing that the original ask to the Department of Commerce was over $2 million for a much larger fuel system to include Jet A eventually, as well as hangar development. We've definitely set up the site development so that future tanks can be added, and things that this project will purchase, such as the credit card reader, the point-of-sale, that will expand and connect to any new tanks. And then also the power. We've contacted PUD, and that's another contract that we're working on with them that will be brought to the city. But PUD's plan right now is to run a service out there and set a transformer at the fuel island, and that'll support additional capacity for any future fuel tanks, as well as also future hangar construction. So I think to the extent possible, we've done that with this project. And so, yeah, if more money shows up, then we can definitely expand the project.
Thank you so much, and I'm glad to hear that we're going to expand it for jet fuel as well as retainer avgas. That's outstanding. Thank you so much for your time.
Council, anyone else with comments or questions?
This is Doug with Public Works. The question about that carb reader, is it going to be available to the general public or is it only for aviation?
The way that typically works, it's not right just because by nature where it's located, it's a little more difficult for the general public to access it, but specific to the Goldendale Airport, since the site access isn't gated, public that knew about it definitely could get access and pump 100 low-led gas if they so desired, the way the project's configured right now.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? If not, do we have a motion?
We gotta love kids. The, I'll make the motion, and that's fantastic. Show us you're a real person.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
This is Andy, I'll second.
Thank you. It's been moved to award a contract to Mascot Equipment Company for a new avgas aircraft fueling system in the amount of $162,765.25. If there's not further discussion, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you, Corey.
Yeah, thank you, guys, and I will, Larry, is it okay if I verbally notify Mascot and let them know that--
Yes, that'd be great.
--in contracting, great? And then I will see you guys in a few, well, probably more like five or six weeks, and we'll talk about the second part of the project, the site development and awarding that.
Okay, that sounds good.
Thanks, Corey.
Thank you.
Have a great night, thanks.
The next item is a discussion of the Goldendale Public Meeting Operational Plan Policy. And on that particular item, the purpose of this particular proposal for a policy is because of changes in the things that are going on in Clehead County with the COVID restrictions. We were at Phase Two, which would allow us to have 25% capacity, which would be 13 people, and we could do it with that. But now that we're at Phase Three, that's 26 people, and that should cover most anything other than a very large crowd from the public that want to attend. So we would like for you to consider the proposal. There's a couple of key things to it. In particular, using Zoom and telephone availability for them to attend the meeting is going to be available long-term, very long-term. The Zoom system has become very, very helpful for workshops and things of that nature, and the telephone has worked well as well. But the main thing about it, whether public or council, anyone that is not comfortable being in a meeting in City Council at this time are perfectly able this way to remain home and participate through Zoom or through the telephone. And I think that will work well, so we'll have a good steady amount of participation in-person. We'll be able to see each other, work together in a much different way than over the Zoom system. Does anyone have any questions or comments? I may not have done an adequate job presenting everything.
Mayor, I think you did just fine. I understand perfectly. And thank you. But what about advertising? I know that in the beginning of the COVID, we had a lot of people that were upset because they could not attend Council's, City Council meetings anymore. Have we thought about maybe putting it in the paper, things along those lines, to try to reach as many people as we can and say, "Look, we're open for business again, but you don't have to be here"?
I think, in particular, the newspaper article will cover that, but we can make a special press release on this item as well. I think we've tried to cover everything we could as far as the potential at this time to have the 25%, knowing that May 22 is going to go to 50%. These COVID restrictions in Washington State are changing very rapidly. Matter of fact, they're changing rapidly all over the country, and they're all on a roll of improving because our numbers are good. And that's very important, that we maintain that, and we maintain that with masking and with the social distancing and being able to work as well as we can together. There's one other thing that the state has done, as I think is very helpful. We had been in the southwest, southeast region that included Clark County, Waukesha, Skamania, and Clehead County. All four counties were in one district, and of course, Clark County is far bigger than any of the other counties. And we're always worried that, well, if they have a problem, all of us will have a problem. Governor Inslee has now made it, each county has its own rating, and all the counties in the state at this time are at Phase Three. If anybody's numbers go beyond the numbers that are laid out in his announcement, then we would be moved back to Phase Two and more or less go back to the restrictions. That's why I think we need to keep it, the 25% here, because if anything goes wrong, we can still meet in-person, but in a smaller number of people, but we'd still have the full council here. Those are the only things that I wanted to make sure I included in this, in this policy. Any questions or-- If not, do we have a motion to approve this policy?
This is Julie, I'll make the motion to approve.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the Goldendale Public Meeting Operational Plan Policy. Any further questions or comments? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye, aye.
Thank you. I don't want to say anything about the other Council members, but with four, I can tell exactly who's here and recognize all the voices real well. Thank you all very much. I think this is going to help us to once again be able to have workshops, committee meetings, and council meetings in this room. And we would hope to see you on April 5, our next City Council meeting. With that, we will go on to resolutions. And Larry will present the details on this resolution for funding for tourism events and festivals for 2021.
Okay, we've been through this process for part of January, February, and now March, and we are ready to adopt by resolution the award package that was recommended by the event committee to the board of council. And the recommendations would be to run our Goldendale Christmas Committee at 3,000, Goldendale Motorsports Association at 7,000, Goldendale Farmers Market at 1,000, and the Chamber of Commerce at 31,000, for a total of 42,000. So we would like to recommend that the Council adopt this Resolution 716 to accept those recommendations and to allow the staff and to prepare the agreements and the mayor to execute them that are included as Exhibit B to this particular resolution.
While we have a discussion, I would like to add just one element that we can add to this. Larry and I discussed it, and GMA had requested in the past, the Future Farmers of America, FFA, has been excellent at providing volunteers for the car shows, and they had in mind to provide them funds for each show, to help them with their travel, with the different FFA projects and things of that nature. And I think on that aspect, we would propose $500 for the Community Days Car Show and 500 for the Concord of Mary Hill Car Show that takes place later in the year. I think it's well-deserved by our youth. They have done a fine job on a number of different items, and this helps them in their service to our community and their knowledge and experiences with their farming issues. Have we had that or just go forward with the--
Go forward with the resolution and maybe ask for concurrence on that.
Okay, we'll do that. I don't know if you heard, Larry, but we will go ahead and call for a vote on a motion and a vote on the funding for tourism events and festivals in 2021, and then we will ask for your concurrence on the money set aside for the FFA, because that'll go straight to them. Do we have further comments or questions from the Council?
Mayor, this is Julie. I have a question for Larry.
Okay, go ahead.
Larry, when we had the event committee meeting, there was a question about having funds available that were not used the previous year. I just want to make sure that's being addressed in the agreements, that if they don't use the money, it's gone, it's not available to be used next year.
Yeah, there's a provision in the Exhibit A portion of the agreement that basically indicates that we should, barring unforeseen circumstances, but pretty much we have asked that you need to invoice it in 2021, and it needs to be paid in 2021. Anything after that really should not be, unless there's some extenuating circumstances, should not be reimbursed. And that's the other thing we're going to make sure that we do as well, and that is these funds will be reimbursement for expenses already made by the entities. So the entities, we need to make sure that they provide us with requests that we then reimburse.
Okay, I appreciate that. Thank you, Larry.
Thank you, Julie. Any other questions or comments?
Yes, Kevin, you know I'm going to talk. The question's actually for Connie. Connie, is there any way, Future Farmers of America is kind of important to me as, it's important to our community. Is there any way that, what little we get for our City Council meetings, that I can, we can donate that money? You can call me tomorrow to answer, Connie.
Okay.
But just, yeah, just take my pay and give it to them.
Okay, I'll call you tomorrow.
Thank you.
Kevin, that warm weather is really softening you up.
Oh, come on!
We're in the 30s tonight, so we're really thinking about how warm it is where you are.
Well, we had 50 mile an hour winds, and it wasn't pretty. We lost a few trees.
Well, that sort of helps. One of the things with this change, just to add it to the discussion, on the tourism events and festivals, since we have the opportunity under Phase Three to have a good many more people, we will be offering, or at least seeing whether there's interest from those organizations that normally make a presentation on a courthouse lawn, that they'll have the possibility to do that, because you can have quite a large crowd overall, and on a courthouse lawn, those are divided into a number of different areas. We still won't have the Beer Garden, that for sure, and we don't expect that we'll have the music because of the lateness of finally getting a situation where we can actually hold Community Days. But I think there's a number of organizations that'd like to be there to explain their program to people or provide pamphlets and information. So they would be more than welcome to join Community Days for this year. We'd really like to have them here if they're interested. They may have concerns as well with the possibility of exposure. Any other questions or comments on the funding? If not, do we have a proposal? I mean, if I motion, I did the proposal.
This is Julie, I'll make the motion to approve the proposal as stated.
Thank you very much. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded to adopt Resolution Number 716, authorizing funding for tourism events and festivals in 2021 in the amount of $42,000.
This is Julie. I'll make the motion to approve the proposal as stated.
Thank you very much. Do we have a second?
All second.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded to adopt Resolution Number 716, authorizing funding for tourism events and festivals in 2021 in the amount of $42,000. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The motion passes unanimously, and now we'll ask for your concurrence on the matter of providing funding for the FFA that will provide these services to the two car shows. Can you concur?
Mayor, this is Lynn. This is mine. I still concur.
Thank you.
This is Andy. I concur. I think you know where I stand, Mayor.
I hope so.
This is Julie. I also concur.
Thank you. Thank you very much. This will make it good for the FFA in a way that we can do this seamlessly. With that, the motion is passed, and we have concurrence to provide $500 for the FFA for the Community Days Car Show, as well as another 500 for the Concord of Mary Hill. Thank you all for your cooperation and help with this. The next item is the Report of Officers and City Administrator, and the first item on that point of the agenda is for Larry to give the report on revenue and expenditures.
Well, all I want to say is that here it is. This is our, our report for, through February of 2021. The thing I want to request, it's sometime in the future, and usually I like to look at the budget in more careful terms, is that each quarter ends. So at the next, the next time we present a report of revenue and expenditures, that will be the first, for the first full quarter of 2021, and I would like to take that time sometime in mid-April to have a budget committee meeting and to go over those items that we've done here in the first quarter of 2021. So that's the only thing I wanted to talk about on that one. As far as other projects that we have going, I just wanted to give you an update on some of the things that are going on. We've already talked about the airport improvement project, and the second thing I'd like to mention with regard to projects is that the sewer main replacement in the alley behind, to the north of the Clickitat County Services Administration Building, we put that project out to bid, and this may be a project that could be done locally. There are several contractors in the community or near or in Clickitat County that do have the ability to do a project like this, and so there's an opportunity for somebody local to, to be the, be the low responsive bidder. So that will be just the one block in the alley between North, or between South Columbus and Grant. They'll be installing two new manholes and replacing the sewer line. The thing that makes this very difficult, the project very difficult, is that the sewer line is eight feet deep, and there's gas on one side, gas and water on one side, and electrical power and telephone on the other side, and it needs to be eight feet deep. So it's going to be, it's going to be quite the project, but, but it needs to be done, and this is a great time to do it before the, before the Clickitat County Services Administration Building is fully, is fully constructed. On the buyer street improvement, we're going to do a project for the water in the streets, replacement of the water main and replacement of this reconstruction of the streets over there between Neil Street and North Columbus, and that project is currently in the plan, preparation of the bid documents by our local contractor and engineering consultant, Pioneers, Pioneer Surveying and Engineering. So they're working on getting that project, plant specifications done, and out to bid here soon. The equipment loans through the Department of Treasury for the street sweeper and for the back truck are, we're, we've begun the paperwork process, and I, I have all the paperwork in that was required to be in before March 18th, and so we'll continue to work on that project. We have the projects quoted out, and now we just need to wait for the Department of Treasury to put all the financing together, and funds will be available sometime in June for payment for these particular pieces of equipment. Then the last thing I wanted to report on was a $1.9 trillion project, of which the City of Goldendale is going to get a portion. It is, it is the, called the American Rescue Plan, and if you're wondering, and now I have to make a caveat, the caveat, and I got these numbers from AWC, which is Association of Washington Cities. It says that these estimates are not official values of the U.S. Treasury and are subject to change. I've heard that the number is somewhere between $600,000 and $800,000 to the City of Goldendale as a direct appropriation from the federal government. The number reported by AWC at this time is $763,302. So we're not sure how that money can be spent or how it will be spent. All I know is that's the number. So it's very preliminary, and we look forward to talking about how we're going to distribute it and expend it out. So with that, I'll pass it off to the mayor.
Thank you, Larry. I especially want to thank Larry for the work he does to prepare the report on revenue and expenditures. That was something the council asked for, and he has really stepped up to do that, and I appreciate a lot of very hard work that you're doing on all of these projects. We'll go to council now, and we'll begin with Andy Hall. Do you have anything you would like to discuss or report?
Not tonight.
Julie?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to thank the Goldendale Police Department for their work on the criminal case that fled out today, knowing some of the victims. I know it's a great relief for them, so I appreciate the great job they did in getting that done. Also want to thank the Goldendale Fire Department, who ran down the hill today with Rule 7 on a possible fire at the Mary Hill Museum. It was kind of scary for a few minutes, the building went afire, but fortunately, it wasn't as bad as we thought. So thanks to the volunteers for getting down there and working that out.
Thank you, Julie. I'll pass it on to the guys. Thank you, Julie.
He said he'll pass it on to the guys.
Oh, perfect.
Next council member will be Mylon Walling.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Again, I want to, I'm pleased to see that we're moving along with the airport, and also they are, soon will be in Phase Three, and perhaps someday will eventually get into Phase Four. And that's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you. Kevin, say up.
I would also like to thank Larry for his reports. He's doing a fantastic job, but I got a phone call today from the VA, and I just wanted to put this out there, because we have a lot of veterans. At my young, spry age of 18, they are already saying that I can go get my shots. So veterans, down here, down where I'm at right now, I cannot get a shot. I'm 30 years too young. Oregon, Portland VA is saying, you can go ahead and go to the VA and jump 20, 30 years. They would have to contact them to make sure they're eligible, but I think the veterans need to know that they can go get their COVID shots much earlier than what other people can.
With that, the mayor's remarks, there's a couple of things. We've, I think I just circulated everybody has a list of the activities that the city's involved in, either they've carried out or were underway, and this is, when I say "city", that's the council as well, to get things done, and it shows a team working very well together, and it sincerely appreciated all the efforts made by our council members and our city staff, without question. Now, I also would like to look towards the future months and possibly years as far as getting past COVID and recovering from all of the impact that the COVID pandemic has had on our businesses, the small businesses in Goldendale and throughout this county that have been severely hit, things that have had to close down completely, which stopped employment, income, everything. And so we need to, as, as the council and as the city government, to work together to be able to use the funds that we will receive from the different amounts of money that are coming from the COVID-19 bill that was passed the last day or two, and I have a list, and I circulated it to you all as well. It's from Senator Murray, sent by her staff liaison, Brian Stevens, and it gives a number of things that I think we need to look at, to pay attention to. It provides funds for working families, for education, for childcare, also for healthcare. It's a, it's a very detailed list. It's the best breakdown of what that COVID bill includes. It's very, very helpful. There's no spin to it. It's just explaining the funds, how many. Of course, this will all be filtered down and, and trickled down to small rural towns, but it will give us some effort, some funds to be able to address some of these problems. Another it covers is the economic support and entertainment. It's for small business relief, for restaurants, for concerts and live entertainment venues, for state small business credit initiatives, and for pensions. All of these things are going to help people of this small community to get back on their feet and get back to, to work as much as they can, and we've lost businesses sadly because of this pandemic, and this will be at least a way that we can work together to serve this community and to be able to get support to them, assistance to them through Small Business Association, through Goldendale, through the Clickitat County Public Economic Development Authority, and elsewhere. Other places that funds are coming from this enormous bill will be housing, rental assistance, homeowner assistance, and homelessness assistance. The tribes will also have a number of benefits, and our Veterans Association, and the veterans' funding is there, and I think if you've received this, Kevin, I think you'll see that a number of things are directed to help our veterans who have also been impacted quite seriously with the COVID. And it also lays out the Washington State priorities, which will be statewide, and it will benefit state, local, and tribal governments on things such as nutrition, on broadband, on transportation, on utility assistance, on aviation workforce, and agriculture and fisheries. I don't know about you, but I've heard an awful lot of very, very brief reports on the COVID bill and some rather dire predictions of what was in it and what wasn't. I appreciate that Senator Murray and her staff have laid this out so we can see it clearly. I think it's important for public discourse and for those people who are anxious to meet and have a discussion on the community needs. I think this will be beneficial to them. With that, we'll go to public comment. Anyone on the line for a public comment?
Don't see anything.
If not, we'll go on to adjournment, and we'll ask for a motion to adjourn this meeting.
This is Andy. I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Andy. And a second.
Second.
Who was that?
It was Kevin, second.
Okay.
Thank you, Kevin. It's been moved and seconded to adjourn city council meeting on August 15, 2021. Our next session will be April 5, 2021, and it'll be here in person. Thank you to all. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Very good. Thank you and good night.
Good night.
Good night.
Good night.